is held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is November 11th, 2020. A day that we honor current and former members of the United States Armed Forces. Due to social distancing guidelines and the regulations imposed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on indoor gatherings. This meeting is being conducted remotely utilizing the Zoom video conference platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment were made available on the township's website in advance of the meeting. So please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women, women who place themselves at harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Okay, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the Republic of the United States.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay. We are missing Commissioner Graham this evening for personnel reasons, personal issues, and we have no substitute professionals, I do not believe. I'd also like to make an announcement that the Board of Commissioners conducted a special executive session meeting on October 29th, 2020, to discuss a personnel matter as well as on November 9th and 11th, 2020, as part of the regular scheduled workshop and business meetings to discuss one personnel matter and two potential litigation matters. Okay. The limitations on the size of indoor public gatherings, all regular and special meetings of the Board of Commissioners and Township Advisory Boards will continue to occur virtually using the Zoom video conversing platform until further notice. Meeting, meeting details and instructions on how to access meetings can be found on the township website, which is www.springfieldmontco.org. Okay, the board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. So I see GD McClintock has her hand raised.
I'm muting you now, Ms. McClintock.
Go ahead, Ms.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to bring up what we were discussing the other night when you said there could be a traffic study about the speeding traffic coming down from Paper Mill Road. And a study would have to be done and they consider doing something like speed bumps would be the best or one of those signs that tells you how, what your, what your speed is, or better yet, a camera and then just send tickets to the people that are speeding. I know it would cost some money, but it's not that much money compared to the safety of the residents on Gordon and Brookside Road.
Yep. Well, later this evening, we are actually, we're submitting a motion on that very subject.
Oh, well, that's great.
Yeah, so I don't, and if anybody else is here to make comment on that.
No, no, fair, fair. I think she's talking about Bethlehem Pike.
She said paper mill. You might mean, you might mean Bethlehem.
I meant coming down from Paper Mill on Bethlehem Pike.
She, she means Bethlehem Pike.
I see your point from the top of the hill. I'm sorry.
Right, right, right. Where the accident was.
I got you. I see your point. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I got you. All right. Okay, well, we, we have studied that intersection at, at some length, you know, we can continue to discuss it.
Yeah, I think we should because it's a dangerous area. And a couple of people were injured there the other day and something could be done, like one of the three things I missed mentioned to slow these people down.
Ms. McClintock, we talked the other night about the causation of that accident.
Yeah, DUI.
Occurred as a result of a DUI and the driver wasn't impaired. With regard to your, your comment about the, the speed limit sign or the radar sign.
Yeah.
Routinely deploy one in that area in the downhill side, but we rotate those signs around. We don't leave them there permanently because they, they start, start to become something that people don't adhere to. They just kind of tune them out.
Yeah.
And then you need to get special dispensation from PennDOT to do any kind of a red light camera. And to my knowledge, there's very few of them around. Roosevelt Boulevard would be one of them.
Yes, I know that. Well, as far as the DUI goes, like what difference does that make? There's still speeding down there and people are going to get hurt whether it's just speeding or speeding DUI. You know what I'm saying?
I'm just clarifying the cause of that accident was as a result of a DUI.
I, I could see that when I went over there. All right. So anyway, I was just asking if, if we could pursue that.
Well, we can talk, we can talk about it. I mean, we've, we've been down that road more than once in the last few months and we discussed putting a light there and other kinds of things.
Yeah, I know that, that can happen. Stop sign, but the speed bump would be the best if that could happen.
And, and you know, so the recommendation was, you know, well, in, you know, short of putting a light there, you know, maybe some other things that we can do, but.
Yeah.
So we'll just have to, you know, continue, you know, thinking about that and discussing it. And I don't have any answers for you tonight, but we'll.
Yes, I know. I just wanted to say something. All right. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, we have two other people, Steve and Klein. Okay, Steve.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Yep.
I'm, I'm present today to speak for the residents at 8408 Widener Road, which have a zoning hearing board application for November 23rd. I was asked to come and give a quick, a quick summary of what they're, what they'll be requesting at the zoning hearing board to alert the Commissioners of the application. Is this the right time to do that or is there?
You can.
Barrett, if you don't mind, let me jump in and, and just explain, Steve, I think.
How you doing, Jim?
I'm doing well, Steve. Good to see you. I think that situation regarding that particular application will or has been resolved in a, in a manner that you and your client will find favorable, but I think, but I would suggest that you wait until Commissioner Cobb's report. And if what happens then is not satisfactory, you're certainly free to say whatever you, you like. But, but I think there's going to be a motion subject to some conditions that I'll explain to remove the township's opposition to that application.
Okay, then I'll hang on and I'll, I'll, I'll come off right now. So thanks, Jim. Thank you, Commissioner Standish.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Okay. Let's see, any other hands up? I don't see any, any other, do we have any email questions? We have Jane Marky. Okay.
Jane Marky.
Yep. Jane, can you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, yep, go ahead.
Okay, I am in a power wheelchair and I go down there often to that road Bethlehem Pike into Gordon Road. I just want to make note that when I am sitting in my chair, there's a probably about 300 pounds total weight between my head, my chair and myself. If the cars go by so fast that they rock my chair and it's a heavy chair. And it feels like an earthquake because cars are going so fast. I know that, you know, there's not a whole lot that can be done. I'm not sure what's actually going to get done about it. But I can't, I don't feel safe enough to be there too long because if I fall out of the chair, I'm, I'm done. So I mean, it is a big safety issue.
Yep. No, we're, we're aware of that and we've discussed that. And we're going to have to continue to, you know, think about that and come up with solutions. And I'm sorry, we don't have anything to tell you sort of this evening, but, but I promise you, we'll, we'll address this as we go along. So.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. No more, any more questions or Brandon, do we have any emails, any, any questions emailed to us? No?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Well, then let's, let's get rolling on the committee reports. I will make my report then. This concerns Resolution Number 1510. I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township adopt Resolution Number 1510, a resolution granting preliminary final land development approval for the three lot residential land development plan of 225 Northwestern LLC. Property is currently improved with a single family dwelling on lot number three of a previously approved subdivision plan. And the developer intends to construct new single family detached dwellings on the three remaining lots, together with sanitary and stormwater management facilities, landscaping and other required public improvements. So that is my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record unanimous vote on that. All right, and next we will then go to Commissioner Harbison, the Chairman of the Internal Affairs and Library Committee. You're, we can't hear you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a poor signal, so if I start to break up, interrupt me and then, and then I'll turn the picture off. So the first thing I have is the, because I got a lot to read here. First thing I have is the bill listing. I move that the Commissioners approve the October check reconciliation in the amount of $1,404,000, that's not my noise, $162.89 and the November bill listing in the amount of $401,263.15. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next is the budget schedule. The budget presentation is tonight and we're doing it this very minute. The budget hearing and budget adoption will be Wednesday, December 9th at 7:30 PM. That will be at our business meeting for December in four weeks from tonight. And they will all be held by the Zoom platform. Moving on to the budget presentation itself, I'm going to read the statement right now. If I can get it, here we go. The Springfield Township Board of Commissioners proposes a balanced operating budget for 2021 of $17,223,096 with a real estate tax rate of 4.516 mils and an earned income tax rate of 1%. To summarize the impact on the typical residential taxpayer as a result of the 2021 budget projections, the taxpayers will realize an increase of $13.15 to their 2021 real estate tax and an increase of $8.62 associated with the refuse service fee. The 2020 real estate tax was the same as 2019 and the 2020 refuse fee was $9.10 more than the 2019 refuse service fee. The typical household in Springfield Township with $175,400 property assessment will pay $792.10 in real estate taxes in 2021, which is an increase of $13.15 or 1.7% more than 2020. The increase to the real estate tax is necessary due to the contractual increases to employee wages and benefits, contributions to the volunteer fire companies and a decrease in revenues associated with interest and rental income. These costs are offset to some extent by reductions in capital project expenses, debt service payments and health insurance premiums. The 2021 discounted refused service fee will increase from $223.24 to $231.86 or 3.9% per household due to increases in both the waste and recycling disposal fees, together with more modest increases in employee wages. The resource recovery plant where the solid waste collected by the township is converted to energy is increasing the waste disposal fee charged to the township by $1.19 per ton. In addition, the average monthly cost to process and market single stream recyclables is projected to increase by over $40 per ton in 2021. The amount of household refuse and recyclables collected by the township has remained about the same as in prior years and the township has reduced its operating capital costs for 2021 to absorb some of the costs associated with the recycling program. However, the cost charged to the township to transport and process recyclable materials has increased dramatically over prior years. In addition, the market for sorted materials continues to be negatively impacted by restrictions imposed by the Chinese government banning the import of certain recyclable materials. The township will continue to fund its general budgetary obligations through traditional revenue sources such as real estate tax, earned income tax, real estate transfer tax, mercantile and business privilege tax, licenses and permits, fines and department earnings. In 2019, a local service tax was enacted whereby individuals employed within Springfield Township now pay a dollar per week or $52 annually through a payroll deduction. Those who do not earn more than $12,000 annually are exempt from the tax. The township anticipates the receipt of an additional $25,000 in revenues from the local services tax in 2021. Finally, the 2021 preliminary budget will be made available for inspection in the office of the Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, and in the Township Library, 8900 Hawthorne Lane, Windmore, beginning at 5 o'clock on November 13th, 2020. The 2021 preliminary budget will also be posted to the township website on or before the above date. Summary copies of the budget are also available upon request. The Board of Commissioners will accept questions and comments on the budget at their workshop meeting on December 7th, 2020 at 7 o'clock. And again, as part of the budget hearing and budget adoption on December 9th, 2020 at 7:30 PM. All aforementioned meetings will be held via the Zoom virtual meeting platform unless otherwise advised in advance. So there you have that announcement. And then the next thing on the budget and on the agenda is item five for Township Engineer. Undercover letter of November 11th, 2020, Mark W. Icehold Township Engineer announced that it would be necessary for him to resign his position as the appointed Township Engineer for personal reasons. Mark has served as the appointed Township Engineer since January 2012 and is responsible for the completion of a number of important infrastructure projects. With the resignation of Mr. Icehold, the township is in need of an interim appointment to fulfill the duties of the Township Engineer. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Timothy P. Woodrow, PE of Woodrow and Associates, Inc. as an interim Township Engineer. Mr. Woodrow is the president of the firm bearing his name and presently, presently serves as Township Engineer for Lower Moreland Township, Plymouth Township, Skipak Township and Lower Providence Township. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the motion?
This should be an at-will contract basically, so.
Township engineers always at-will.
Yep, okay.
Hearing no more questions or comments, then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harbison. Okay, next we will move on to the Commissioner Wilson, Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee. And he is also going to take the report of Commissioner Graham, who was absent tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to announce that during the month of October 2020, Springfield Township residents recycled 189.6 tons of materials with a householder participation rate of 83.6%. The net cost for the month was $26,125.17. That concludes my environmental report. Now for the Parks and Recs report. On Monday, I'm pleased to report that on Monday, November 9th, 2020, the Board of Commissioners interviewed five candidates for a vacancy on the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. While the board was equally impressed with the tech, with the talents and the enthusiasm of all the candidates interviewed, it can only appoint one individual at a time. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Sarah Hughes of Windmore to a full, to, to a full and unexpired term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Ms. Hughes's term of service shall expire on May 12th, 2022. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the motion?
Just a comment, you know, it was really heartening to have five, you know, very qualified, very enthusiastic people come out for this. We've seen it with some other committees as well. So I think we're just really lucky as a township to have talented, you know, smart, bright people willing to, to fill these volunteer positions.
Yep. Yep. And I will also just say that, you know, unfortunately, we just don't have enough that many positions open for so many applicants. But I would ask that people not give up and, you know, continue to read our website and look for opening position, positions open and also task forces and other things that some of our committees are sponsoring in the future. So. Okay, that concludes your report.
We have to vote, don't we?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. All right. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my reports.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, next we will move to the Chairman of Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item this evening. I move that the Board of Commissioners accept the August 31st, 2020 proposal of McMahon Associates Traffic Engineers and Planners to conduct a speed limit evaluation study of Paper Mill Road between Church Road and Golf Road in Orland. The purpose of the study is to determine if the roadway meets the warrants to reduce the posted speed limit from 35 to 25 miles per hour. The study will perform traffic counts at three separate locations over a seven day period to determine the volume, classification and prevailing 85th percentile speeds in both directions of travel, as well as an analysis of reportable crash history over the most recent five year period and site distance evaluations at five intersections. The total not to exceed cost of the study is $3,700. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, please record a six, four and one against vote. No, I'm sorry, five, four. Commissioner Graham is not here, so. Five, four, one against.
One.
Yep. Okay. And that concludes your report, Commissioner?
Yes, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, moving on then to the Chairman of our Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, and I will put out the same caveat that if you happen to, if my audio cuts off, just give me a signal and I'll come back. So first I'd like to announce that there is a zoning, the Springfield Township zoning hearing board will meet on Monday, November 23rd at 7:00 PM. The meeting will be conducted via the Zoom virtual meeting platform to receive testimony on the following applications. And then give me a second here.
Does that dog get a vote?
Yes, exactly. He's getting, he's getting kicked, kicked under the table right now.
Right now.
Gotta be a rottweiler.
So we'll be hearing the, the following applications. The first is application of Davis Patterson and Patterson Construction, owners of the property located at 503 Grayton Road in Orland, PA. The applicant is seeking a dimensional variance from section 114-64, seeking approval to construct in addition to the front facade of the home that will reduce the front yard setback from 28 feet in depth to 20 feet, as per the plan submitted. The front yard setback within the zoning district is 30 feet. And then the second application will be for Diana and Syracuse and Robert Rutterow, owners of the property located at 8404 Widener Road in Windmore. The applicant is seeking a dimension of variance and use variance to approval to construct a two-story pool and guest house. And then finally, the case number 20-16, this is the application for RNA Real Estate LLC, owners of a property located at 825 and 827 Pleasant Avenue in Windmore. The applicant is seeking a special exception from, from section 114-138 to permit the conversion of the tavern area to a less intensive use of two additional residential uses with no changes to the dimensional non-conformities or onsite parking. A special exception has been requested for use of the building. Dimensional variance has been requested as well for, to allow for a lot area of 3,800 square feet instead of the required 5,000 square feet. An interpretation has been requested to address the lack of existing buffers and also to address the existing building coverage on the site of greater than 25%. And finally, from, for a section to confirm the existing non-conforming onsite parking requirements. In the alternative, the application has requested the required dimensional variances. And with that, I'm actually going to ask our solicitor who did some work on this this afternoon to also make a comment on the property as well.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I think my comment relates to the second application that you mentioned, which is the application for the pool house, which would require a variance because of its height. The Commissioners had considered the possibility of sending my office to oppose that application due to a concern about the size of the, of the pool house and the, the ease with which it could be used for purposes other than a pool house. I spoke this afternoon with the attorney for the applicant who has advised me and based upon that advice, I have advised the Commissioners that the applicant would agree, number one, that there will be no stove or oven permitted in the premises. Number two, that there would be a deed restriction recorded against the property that the pool house may not be rented or utilized on any kind of a permanent basis for, as a dwelling. And number three, that the use and occupancy permit for the pool house would include a note that, yes, I'm sorry, the building permit for the pool house would include a note that a use and occupancy permit for the pool house will not be available unless and until a swimming pool is actually built in association with the pool house. And I think based upon, it is my understanding at least, that based upon the imposition of those three conditions, the zoning hearing with the Board of Commissioners will not take a position against this application. That's all I have, sir. That's all I have, sir.
Would the board be able to approve that?
Well, no, I think, well, yes, we ought to have a motion because there's three conditions and I know that Mr. Klein and the applicant are in the waiting room. I don't know if they either one, Mr. Rutterow or Mr. Klein feel that they want to address anything that I've said or maybe they could even indicate agreement if that is agreeable.
See, Mr. Klein has a hand raised, so.
Mr. Klein has a hand raised.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Klein.
So, yeah, that is our understanding, I had been in touch with the, with the applicant's attorney, Mark Jonas, and that is our understanding of the three conditions that Mr. Garrity has just enumerated, so. That's our understanding also.
Okay. Did, just so, you know Steve and the applicant knows, there will probably be a letter, at least a letter, if not a personal appearance, but at least a letter from the township to the zoning board saying that the township wishes those three conditions to be imposed. And if those three conditions are not to be imposed, then the township would ask, or I should say, if the applicant does not agree to those three conditions, then the township will request a continuance in order for my office to appear to oppose the application.
Yes, we understand that.
Very good.
Mr. Garrity, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The applicant would have to meet all the other building requirements of the township in addition to the, the ones you just outlined, is that correct?
That is correct and, and no, and the applicant understands that no favorable decision from the zoning hearing board is guaranteed. We just, we simply eliminate our taking a position on the application. It's entirely up to the zoning board and to the applicant to carry this burden.
I was gonna say, I mean, that, that sort of eliminates our taking a position, but certainly neighbors and, you know, residents that are impacted by it can also show up and, and sometimes they can have an even greater impact on the decision of the, of the board.
That is correct, they can say anything they like.
So we need to, need to form a motion, so Commissioner Cobb, do you want to take a shot at, you know, voicing a, a motion?
Yeah, I guess, um, I guess, I, I will.
Want me to state it, Jonathan, and then you can just adopt it?
It looks like Mr. Klein has his hand up again.
Okay, yeah, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we do understand that the things that Mr. Garrity has outlined in no way guarantees a favorable decision from the zoning hearing board and we still need to put on our case in front of the zoning hearing board, so we are well aware of that and we appreciate the board's non-commit, non-position on this matter, thank you.
Great, thanks.
And then I'll, I'll state the motion for the board and then if, if it is satisfactory to Mr. Cobb, he can adopt it. And that is that the Township Board of Commissioners has determined not to take a position on the Rutterow application to the zoning hearing board provided the applicant indicates his agreement to, or the property owner's agreement to the three conditions I mentioned. Number one, there's to be no stove or oven in the premises at any time. Number two, that the, a deed restriction is to be recorded against the property putting prospective purchasers on notice that the property is not to be used for a, as a dwelling or for a, an apartment. And then number three, that the building permit for the pool house will be subject to a written condition on the permit that no use and occupancy permit for the pool house will be available unless and until a pool is built in association with the pool house. And on that basis, the commissioners will not take a position on this application. And if that is not the case, that if those conditions are not agreeable to the applicant, then the zoning hearing board will be requested to schedule a continued hearing so that the Board of Commissioners can send my office to oppose the application. That is the motion.
All right, then, as a motion, I adopt the, the motion as just iterated by our solicitor.
Okay, thank you, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and any more questions or comments on the motion? Okay, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, all right, please record a five, four and one against vote on that matter, on that motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, that's my, that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cobb. So next we will move to the Chairman of our Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have two motions this evening. First, resolution number one five one one, I move that the Board of Commissioners about the resolution number one five one one, a resolution accepting a deed of dedication from the Sandy Run Country Club for a fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen square foot variable width right-of-way along a portion of Walnut Avenue, Orland, as described in accordance with the plan titled Right-of-Way Acquisition Plan, Sheet One of One, prepared by Boucher and James, Inc., dated June ninth, two thousand twenty, that is my motion.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Second item regarding the Walnut Avenue walking path, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of an agreement with Sandy Run Country Club for the construction of a public walking path along Walnut Avenue from Orland Mill Road to Sandy Run Park. The agreement sets forth the rights, responsibilities and obligations of the township and Sandy Run Country Club with regard to the dedication of right-of-way, construction of the walkway and associated improvements and the relocation of existing improvements within the right-of-way. While there are no immediate plans to begin construction of the walking path at this time, the township is actively pursuing several grants to fund its construction and to facilitate access to the park. That is my motion.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the motion?
I just say that I just wanted, again, I think it's gonna be a excellent addition to the area and I really appreciate the cooperation that we had with Sandy Run Country Club in working with us and enabling the park, the path to come into fruition. I think it's, it really is gonna be a great addition to that part of our township.
Well, so.
Okay, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lee. Okay, well, that concludes our committee reports. So we are now, the board is now open to comments or questions from the public. Any questions or comments from the public? Yeah, Christine, is that, is that a, is that a clap or, or you wanna, you wanna say something or?
Looks like just a clap.
Just a clap, okay, well, thank you.
You like them.
Yeah, good, we don't get, we don't, we need, we need pat on the back every once in a while. All right.
Yeah, good thing this doesn't have a middle finger feature.
That's gonna be an Apple thirteen or something like that. All right, that then concludes the public portion of our meeting and with nothing else on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us, okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, Steve.